We will go to meet at six oh seven for the public here on our work article or ten work articles, Marshall Bell meeting.
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna go through these. So this is just a draft warrant, subject to some changes, but we're just gonna go through it. So it'll be to the town of Acton, warrant to Robert Anderson, our constable in the state of Maine. You are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town of Acton, qualified to vote in town affairs, to assemble at the Acton Town Hall on October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, with an extra space, at six o'clock to vote the following articles. I will tell you that the select board in their prior meeting had a discussion about having it held at the school, and as soon as I get that okay from the school, we'll notify and post accordingly. So keep an eye on the location over the next couple of days. Article one will be to choose a moderator, which you'll do by secret ballot, so no discussion for that. Article two, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to expend monies from the approved contingency fund of thirty-one thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars previously allocated to municipal management for any town department as they deem advisable to support operations in the fiscal year.
Okay, I'll speak to this one. Last year, I think was the first year, that the operating budget for the town had included a contingency fund. It wasn't the amount of thirty-one thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars. That was placed into the municipal management category of the budget. As we now have a little experience with that, and some of the warrant articles that you see here today, what we're proposing is that we would, the select board would have the authority to use that broadly within any department, and with any department within the town. So, for example, if we found the transfer station was overdrawn because there was more trash hauling than expected, we'd be able to allocate money out of the contingency to that. Or if there was a problem with winter maintenance, and it had gone over, we would be able to use it for that. So anywhere within town government, we would be able to, not the school, but anywhere within town government, we would be able to allocate the funds to that. So that's basically what that fund is about.
So a little more clarity there. If you're not familiar with how the town government works to a more specific detail, when you vote on municipal management, it's also referred to as general government, that is the code enforcement, town administrator, treasury, board of select, and that's everything basically in the town hall. When you vote on a warrant article, you can't exceed or move money outside of warrant articles without the approval. So although you guys already approved this money last April at town meeting, it was inside municipal management, which means they can only spend it from the town clerk, the town administrator, the treasury, the CEO. We don't foresee any issues in that, but that was just the way that we wrote it. That was our era. Next year, it'll be a more broad, so if the transfer station needs it, the fire department needs it, the board would have the ability to use it anywhere, not just in municipal management. So it's just a move of the money, it's just authorization should they need. If it's not spent, whether it's municipal management, where you've already approved it, or someone else, it stays in your unassigned fund balance.
Any questions? Are we taking questions as we go through it? Yeah, any questions? Oh? Okay, I'll go on to the next one.
Article.
Go ahead.
Article three, to see if the town will vote to appropriate sixty-five thousand dollars from the unassigned fund balance to be placed in the town hall parking lot capital reserve account.
Okay. I think now that we have the old fire station gym taken down, it presents a, I think, an enhanced view of the town hall complex. And the select board had been talking about, this would be a great time, before we actually pay about here, to try to bring about some landscaping improvements to the complex. And we engaged a landscaping firm to come in and give us a proposal. They've done that, we've got some photos here to show you. But this particular article would appropriate sixty-five thousand dollars to complete the paving up into, up to the library, the edge of the library building, and do the landscaping that you're gonna see some pictures of. So let's go to the pictures.
Actually, it's for video.
Yep. If we go through, we'll pause it, and I'll try to describe what you see. Not coming on?
It will.
Yeah, okay.
You might wanna talk about it.
Okay. We had it a moment ago, now it's, we're not getting it. Let me just briefly try to describe what we're doing. The improvements will really take place from the edge of the entrance here, down to the sign, the sign, the Acton town sign. The wood and tail, I'll try to get them all. And by the way, we will post the video online, can we do that? We'll post the video online, so then people can take a look at this and get a better understanding prior to our meeting next week. Well, actually, it's on the thirtieth, isn't it? It's on the thirtieth. The town sign will be, there'll be a raised bed with landscaping blocks around it, an opportunity to plant some, to put in some plants and flowers and so on, just to enhance that area. The next, there'll be a redefinition of the entrance here. As you see, you can enter or exit anywhere along from the edge of the property, the tree line here, down quite a ways. And by the use of barriers that will have some natural stone and/or some plantings, there'll be a more defined entrance and exit into the parking lot. Right now, it's, I think, a little chaotic, because people come in and out, especially as we're in the area where the gym was located, the old fire station, that will be a parking lot, and that's all gonna be paved in there. So next, we'll be, we'll try to address some of the parking in front of the building here, to create some more handicap spaces. That's still something we've gotta talk about, but we've been approached by the state about our lack of handicap accessibility, and we're gonna try to do the best we can, given the challenges of this sloping lot. But in any event, we'll do our best to address that. Just beyond the library, there will be, right up next to the library, there will be, where the portico is now, is that what it's called?
Yes.
Yeah, the portico. There'll be a paver patio there, with some planter boxes, so it'll have some bush, some flowers, and just try to enhance the side of the building. There will then be a roadway that will access down to the code enforcement office. Oh, here we go.
We got it.
We got it. All right, so, do we turn that down? Thank you. Okay.
We can start from the beginning, Tom, we got this.
Okay, so this is the planter box around the sign, it, over... This, hold it right there. This is, that's where the portico is now. This will be a patio area, and that quite frankly, I think, can be used by residents and/or people that might wanna have, for instance, right now, we use the hall for birthday parties and so on. If it's a nice day, they can hold them out there, or if there's some kind of an event that they might have, it would just be an additional amenity for the town. You can see that this is depicting, I think, a little more in the way of handicap parking than we have today. And this will all be, there's a retaining wall here that will be out of block, and this will all be pavers, and here, there is depicted some planters for some kind of shrubbery or flowers. Let's, over here, can we get to that? It's fine, Jennifer.
Yeah, I need to help.
Right, right in this area, is another patio area with, it's not particularly large, but it has picnic tables or some kind of seating there. So again, it could be used to supplement or complement what's done in that patio. Yeah, this is it, right here, that's what I'm referring to, this right there, okay? And you'll notice the traffic, the parking lot is basically over here, that's where that's all gonna be paved, and will be paved, new paving, right up to this line. So all of that will be paved, and graded and tended to as part of the paving bit. You can see an exit here, and an entrance here, and in between, there'll be some stones, lager stones here, and then some, you know, some kind of plantings in here, trees, shrubs, whatever. The details of that are still to be finalized. And you'll notice over here, another one, that would then run up to the veterans memorial. So that whole area will kind of be enhanced.
Keep playing?
Hmm?
I'm gonna keep on the plan.
Yeah, keep going. So that's the planter box next to the library, those are the picnic tables. I don't know what kind of tables we'll actually use, this is just what was drawn here.
Okay.
Is that it?
Yeah, you've got the one around the sign, that by one nine?
Yeah, that right there, trying to enhance that sign area. We, as you said, we had a landscape designer draw these for us. They came out, inspected the site, looked at the elevations, and have given us a detailed specification list that would be the basis, if it's approved, of a big document that would go out to find a landscape contractor to do this.
Was there any consideration to possibly doing the planters on the patio on the edge?
Please come up, if you wouldn't mind, thank you. Planter box, these right up here?
Yeah, the planter box is in the patio area, rather than tie up the middle of the patio. To me, it makes more sense to have them on the perimeter of the patio.
I think that might make a lot of sense.
That's just a opinion I have.
I think we need to spend a little time thinking about how this area might be used. You know, we don't have much in the way of amenities within the town, and I think if we can be thoughtful about how to use this area, then we can think about perhaps what kind of events, as they say, birthday parties, whatever, who knows? Maybe the, maybe the kids have a dance out there with a band. I think it would be great for the kids to have something in town where they could, they could hold events and/or individuals. But I appreciate your comment, and we'll certainly consider it.
Do you think you have enough funding? Sixty-five thousand dollars won't get too much.
Well, I, I, this contractor had, had given us not only specifications but price, and he's a, he's a very competent contractor. He does commercial-grade stuff. And so this, this amount that is here is adequate to cover that cost. Now, we still have some potential modifications we wanna make, there's a little bit of extra money in there, if we need it, but I think we're, at this point, we're being pretty safe.
But there's also fifty-six thousand dollars already in that account.
Yeah, yeah. What we've done is we've taken the parking account, we all know that monies were appropriated to that. We have, thank you.
So you're black, you don't black talk with suffering?
Well, we had sixty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars in that account.
In that account?
Yeah, we paid twenty-five hundred dollars for the landscaping design. We had a town hall survey done, which is gonna be approximately seventy-five hundred dollars. So there's about ten thousand dollars. That leaves us fifty-six thousand, seven hundred. We estimate the paving is gonna be about thirty thousand dollars to take us up to the library. And then the remaining balance is the amount that we've set aside, and I'd rather not get into a lot of details of that. But the remaining amount is what's been set aside to cover the landscaping, and based on the estimate, we've got, there's some wiggle room in there, but of course, we'll only spend what we have to.
To advertise it, to advertise it to the penny, so people that are gonna bid on it know.
Yeah, we don't wanna, we don't wanna pass our numbers up.
Trying to arrange.
You know, number of tables you put in there, just adds up.
Yeah, yeah.
Just as a question, if this goes through, that sign, today, we can get a sign that anybody in the office can sit at their computer and go, "Buh, buh, 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 buh." There you go, Mrs. Jennifer, and guess what? It will say what you want it to say. Nobody has to go out with a ladder and flip letters.
Who would maintain it?
Sorry?
Who would maintain it if something happened? Do I have to have a separate fund to maintain it?
No, it's just a staff, it's just gonna enter it, and like Sanford has its hole in one, so it's just something that can change right from the keyboard. We would train several staff members.
It's easier to maintain than what's in there.
It could require repair in the future, if that's what you're referring to, I'm glad you, where the question came from, I couldn't see. It could require that, but that would be the same as maintaining a computer or whatever. We just have a responsibility to maintain it.
I would like to have some clarification on the dollar amount.
Yeah?
Was it three years ago that we put sixty-five thousand?
Yeah.
Then the following year, we put another ten for paving the parking lot.
It was seventy-five thousand then, and then another ten.
We've also paid for the building removal out of that account.
Yeah, we, the demolition of the building. I think we had the assessment of the town hall complex paid out of there as well, the facility assessment that was done was paid out of there. If you wanna detail accounting, we can certainly provide that to you.
Well, I guess my, my issue is, when we did this originally, it was for paving the parking lot. And since then, we've taken that money and tore down the building, paid for that.
Yeah.
And apparently, we're paying for a survey for the town property out of that money. And we're not...
Can you find the word?
With the design of the, that you showed tonight, we're not gaining any parking for the people that come up to do business at the town clerk's office.
Well, we are going to be paving that dirt area out there, that entire area from the library, at the bottom of the slope, as I recall, right down to all of that disturbed area, that will be a parking lot. So in fact, there will be a lot more parking available that's covered under this project.
And I believe that the article wasn't written, it was written more gray, so we could, it was more...
It was just a lot of improvements.
And part of that parking lot improvement was getting rid of the building to make the parking lot.
Back in 2021, to see if the town will vote to establish pursuant to thirty, a, I'm sorry, a section five, I want a capital improvement reserve fund for the town hall parking lot reconstruction, and to raise and appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars for the same. It's the first time it was created, and then we've added to it since.
Yeah.
Parking hall lot reconstruction.
Reconstruction.
Whole parking lot.
And that wasn't for, isn't by definition for surveying or tearing down the building?
I actually think a survey is a pretty natural part of expanding and improving your land, to make sure that you're...
We can't do anything with this part of the parking lot.
Especially right here, your part, you put a parking lot, it runs right through the middle of it.
I think it's pretty wise to survey your property before you start improving it. So to me, that seems like a natural thing.
He just thinks it should've been out of a different fund.
I'm sorry?
He just thinks it should've been out of a different fund.
Well, that may be, but, you know, I think, I think you could make an argument that the, the surveying is part of the parking improvement. Well, I mean, you could argue either way. I could argue that it is, and you might say it isn't, I appreciate that, but, you know, I don't think it's a stretch to say that it is.
Not saying that it shouldn't have been done, it should've just been separate.
Can you come off the podium and speak? We're trying to get everybody on camera, that's all they can hear you.
I did, I'm just saying, my interpretation when we did this was we were reconstructing the parking lot, and at that particular time, there was never anything said about surveying the property, and there was never anything said about taking this money to take down the old fire station.
Okay.
And then to add another sixty-five thousand dollars to this, it's just a lot of money.
I understand.
And we still have nothing for what we put forward three years ago.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Just got a couple things. The telephone call, the new entrance and exit, is there gonna be something around encompassing the telephone calls, if we don't run into instances that we've already had?
There's definitely gonna be some taken care of.
All right, just wanna make sure we don't forget about it, depending on where those entrances are.
That's saying it's eating my pockets in town than anything.
Yeah.
All right, perfect. And then the only other thing I was thinking about, I don't know when we approve events happening here, or how it happens, like if anything ever happens during business hours. My concern of encouraging, if we're gonna use that as an entrance and exit to the bottom to the codes office, my only concern would be foot traffic back and forth, if we're gonna encourage a sitting area, picnic tables, whatever, on the opposite side of the road, across.
Okay, I'll turn it up, thank you.
Hey, any more?
I believe the part of the assessment that was done of the town hall facilities was that the entrance was very difficult as far as handicap access goes. Would any of this address that concern?
It's, it's, it's my understanding that it's the slope that is the issue.
By the ramp.
And it's, it's just a feature of this site, and quite frankly, we haven't been able to come up with a solution to the problem. We would love to address it, and, but that slope makes it difficult for handicap access. That's my understanding. The state has mentioned it to us. We just don't know, you know, maybe we need to spend some more time studying it, but there's no obvious answer to that problem.
We're probably going to, what we're working on for the November election, because we've gotta put things in place, because we've been notified that this, the way the ramp is out here, it's too much of a slope for a wheelchair to get down into it. But these doors are wide enough, so we're working on different entrance. If the project goes through, they'll also put more handicap out front, including a banned entrance, but there'll be a different ramp coming up through, we may have to switch entrances.
Okay, I assume you would pave before the landscaping went forward?
No.
No, after, so we can abut the paving to the landscaper. You don't wanna do, you wanna do the paving last.
If you do the retention rolls and stuff, you pave up two of them.
Oh, all right.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. The other thing is, the patio, we live in Maine, three months of the year, it's too hot, and rest of the nine months, it's either raining or snowing. It would be nice to have an area like that, and if there's some way that we could investigate, maybe securing the foundation of this town hall, so that it were secure, and not a rodent nest, would be lovely. You know, I, I think you'd get much more use out of the enclosed space than a patio.
Are you talking about this enclosed space?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Boardstein, I don't know, I've known Jennifer, but I'm one of the board members of the library, the trustees. So I just wanted to ask about the library, or mention the library, because I think the library was part of the survey that was done for the...
The whole building, it's all homeless, yeah.
And there was a plan at one point, because we are outgrowing our facility over there, to put us in that gym, and then that became unfeasible, especially now that it's not there. And so I just wanted to put that back on the table, that we are still looking to expand in some way, and I didn't know if this would be a good time to think about that, or are we thinking that the library's gonna go to someplace off the site? Because I know in February, I believe the end of February, Elise was here, and she had applied for a grant between half a million and a million dollars, and so we had to come to the board, because we needed a liaison, which we didn't. And we needed to know that the town would either lease us the land or give us the land. We got that money, and I know you guys have been very supportive into the library, and I understand that's more than just giving out books and we do lots of classes, and give us the space to do some of those big classes. So I was just wondering about, I wanted to put it on the table that we are still in need of a bigger space, and if that was something that could be incorporated or thought about.
Would that grant provide funding for an addition, or would it be a new building?
Well, we, we didn't end up making it to the next level for that particular grant.
I, I would suggest the library, if they feel they have an issue with space, is to really define what your needs are, to make your case for what you think your needs are. It's very hard for us to in any way plan for what your needs may be, because we, quite frankly, don't know. And so I think the library board ought to make that assessment, make clear what your needs are, then we can have a discussion in the community about, you know, how do they feel about whatever it is you might propose, and then I think the board of select can take that up. That would, so I think you've got some work to do as a board, and once that's done, I'm sure we'll be happy to, you know, start a process on it.
It might be a good time to start thinking about a comprehensive plan committee to address some of the future needs that are pretty apparent. We've got the, I believe, the scouts meeting up at the church, there's a lot of youth groups in town, which are wonderful.
Yeah.
And they need a place to meet.
Hi, Bernard Berger. I apologize, because I'm coming into the, I didn't realize this meeting was on, I just got back from Massachusetts, and this is the first warrant article I was listening to, so immediately came up. Because my concerns are, number one, the comprehensive plan, because we have taught, or at least, you know, we paid, I think, for a study of assessing the structures and the liability and all that, and then part of that, if I remember right, was recommendations about, well, we could add on to the town hall with a library and so forth. I opposed the tearing down of the fire station, and I'm very happy to say that I was wrong about that, I'm delighted with how the facility looks with that gone. That said, now we've paid for another study for landscaping, and I don't oppose that, we certainly need to spruce the area up. But, now, I may be misspeaking, because again, I flew in, I'm listening to, you know, trying to listen, I didn't see the diagrams, but if I heard correctly, there was talk of a patio, an area for kids to play and so forth. Now, depending, if those happen, depending on their placement, are we wasting money if we then may be adding on to the library? Are they gonna have to be torn out? Because I don't know the placement, but I raised that concern. I also had public safety concerns, because I heard, if I heard correctly, Tom, you were talking about it'd be nice for a place for kids to play and so forth.
Well, to get it, yeah.
Would it be nice? Absolutely. Is the town hall the best place to have it? I'm not so sure. And I also would be concerned about then a desire to replicate those, because the first thought that popped into my head is, well, if you're gonna have a play area, or you're gonna have a like picnic area and so forth, seems to me, the more logical place might be if the town has ball fields. place might be if the town has ball fields, recreation fields off-site, because otherwise people are probably going to say, well, let's have some there too, because it just seems like the, the more desirable area. So I didn't come here to poo-poo the whole thing, but I, because I do favor landscaping and sprucing it up, but I think maybe something a little less elaborate, less permanent in nature, and once again, I do think the starting, the big starting point is the comprehensive plan. Do the people want the library, a bigger one? Do they want it here? Do they want it elsewhere? Do they want a community center? Rather than expending all this money in different areas to then find out, well, this is a division that the people have to the town. But, so that's, that's my two cents, or probably more than two cents, but.
If, if I do a little sideline here, the comprehensive plan, as I've looked at the one that we have, it really is not a capital plan. Correct me if I'm wrong, that a comprehensive plan talks about the future direction of the town and how the town wants to handle growth and development within the town. That's the principal function of that document. If you're talking about what kind of facilities do we want in the town, and where should those be located, that is, from my perspective, not the comprehensive plan. That is what I would call a master plan or a capital plan. And so I, I think, because a lot of people have said, oh, we should do a comprehensive plan, but I'm not sure, unless I can be corrected, I'm not sure people are aware of what a comprehensive plan does versus what a capital plan. And I think a lot of people are looking for, to have a discussion and some direction on the capital development of town properties, and that's different than a comprehensive plan.
Well, I agree with you, but I think they're related, because what is the resident's vision for the town?
Yes.
Are they happy with it just the way it is?
Yeah.
Do they want some expansion? Do they think we need more for the community, like a community center?
Yeah.
That sort of thing, a bigger library. And yeah, it's not about, and where would that library be? But it's, it's the town, you know, what would you ideally like to see here? And so I do think it's related, but I also agree with you, there's a distinction to this.
There is a distinction.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll also say, Tom, that comprehensive plan, it, it takes into consideration some per prediction of like the rate at which the town is growing. So if you talk to Jennifer and say, how many people do you have coming to the window? Is this in 10 years, what do you expect that?
How do we feel about business development?
Do we need a larger space? Do we need a different, so, like, it, they are related, and it's important, because do we need a bigger library? How many patrons are going to the library? What are they being used for space?
You do know the library is a separate entity, right?
I know. I'm using it as a different point being.
The library wants a new library. Town act is not.
But the point is, the comprehensive plan takes all those things into consideration. It predicts, or tries to, what direction is the town, like you said, what direction is the town going, and what facilities are we going to need, the ones that we have, are they going to meet those needs?
It's theories, it's theories. That's all it is. You, you put a bunch of stuff on paper. It's a theory on where you think you're going to go. Every year, our, everything evolves. Every year with our ordinances we pass, when we move to the town.
That's why it's a living document, because you can adjust and you can change it.
It's a solar panel farm or whatever, so you, you know, you can make up all, all those you want.
And that's, that's really different on that, but like.
You know, it used to be that, because I understand that the state had a requirement that towns prepare a comprehensive plan. It's my understanding that's been repealed.
Most towns still have.
Is that not right?
It has been repealed.
Yeah, it's been repealed. So for whatever reason, the state seems to have backed away from, uh, the requirement for comprehensive plans. I, I think regardless, call it what you want, what I, what I think the town needs is to assess what its facility needs are in the town, and with that, assess what the priority is on those things, and then develop a capital budget, figure out how you're going to pay for it, how the taxpayer is willing to raise money for that. There's a whole series of things that have to happen in order to get to that point.
But part of those, making sure that the money that we do spend, it lasts a while. So if we're going to build a facility, that's not only going to take care of the current needs, but potentially future needs as well, which is where the comprehensive plan comes in.
So you talked about what we need to do. You've done that. You had an engineering analysis. That's the, you know, what should be done. We went to a town hall. We said we wanted to reserve this money for emergency purposes. Now we're going to build picnic tables with sixty-five thousand that wasn't planned for. It's coming out of the, you know, unreserved, undesigned funded balance. I mean, that's not a plan. That's kind of in my mind, like winging it, you know? Well, we have this much for a parking lot paving. Let's just, um, you know, make it look better. Let's throw some patios. Let's throw some picnic tables. Now we're up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Well, that's your opinion. I appreciate that. I, I just happen to disagree with it, and I think the town hall, I think the community could benefit from some effort to enhance the appearance of the town complex. This was one.
The number is too high. Well, we'll find out in October period.
Yeah, I guess we will. And, and that's fine. I, I appreciate that people have different opinions on it. Um.
I'd like a clarification on the paving. You said it's going to stop at the library?
Yes, at the edge of the library, yeah.
So when you walk out the library, is everything is to the right? The total, total one oh nine?
Yes.
Okay. What about in front of the, in the library, all the way up to the church? What are you going to do with that? You're going to grind it, repave it, or you're going to leave it? Don't you think?
I think for the time.
You're going to really do?
I think for the time being, it's proposed to leave it where it is.
No, it's not what everybody was thinking.
No, what we were thinking, because this is, this is a site of ledge. This is basically a piece of ledge.
Yeah.
If you ground it and then coordinate it with the, the church, I don't know whether they have the money to do it, or we could work out something, so that you also do theirs and do the whole thing all at once, and then proceed down, possibly get a, uh, an estimate what it costs to take that telephone pole out of there and bury it. It's out of there. And then go back and then have one flat or one, uh, area to all pay. Another option would be if you put, if you had the real guts, you could put a retaining wall toward one oh nine and take that step down and go all the way up there and have one level piece of land that later in years to come, if you wanted to do whatever you want to do, it's all level. It's, that's all, that's, that's all I have to ask about. I think that the planting design has merit, but there's so many other needs that this town has, like taking the algae off the back of the, uh, building and, and doing something about the rodent problem here, possibly see what, what we're going, how we're going to expand, if ever, are we going to ever expand this, or how much it's going to cost to get a new piece of land and then develop that into a town complex. So it's, you know, it's nice. It sounds nice, but I, I think right from now, we've got to concentrate on the parking lot, which was what we originally set this money aside for.
Yeah, can I just, can I address something?
Go ahead.
That slope, a parking project, to the best of my knowledge, is not going to remove that slope. I don't know how you take and address that slope and allow people to come in here and get up to this parking lot. It's not like you can tier it and, you know, kind of level it out in tiers. It's one continuous road that goes from here up to the parking lot. So I think because of the site, we are, we are sort of left with the need for having this slope. So I don't know how you would do what you're proposing. Uh, perhaps there's a way, but no one's been able to talk about it for me.
Um, I have just a question or another thought on this whole thing. We're talking about, uh, handicap access. We're talking about a slope. Is it possible to research making a new entrance to the town hall in the area where the proposed patio would be? And in doing so, possibly stairs and next to this, adjacent to the stairs, an elevator that would allow handicap people get up to the main level for our town office. So this is just a thought I'm throwing out to you all.
Good, Tom. Thank you.
That maybe that could be a solution to some of these questions.
Yeah, let me clarify what I was saying. From the library, as it slows down, leaving this be, going down to that point and then it slows down. It, it's pretty tricky, because then you've got the, the different elevation of the, uh, the road and, and balancing the whole thing. What I'm talking about, if you went directly that way to the one oh nine and took that and leveled from the library that way, the best you can, and tapered into the, into the road, uh, into H road.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a tricky thing. Then you would open up this space as one.
Not this slope, that slope.
Oh, no.
No, because I don't know what you can do with this.
Okay. It may be, it's, it's a non-ledge, but don't forget those little planting things and putting the cars in the, this is going to be a maintenance problem.
Yeah.
Not only maintain the plants, but to maintain the plowing and the whole thing, and we're going to have snow, we're going to have a, a major, whatever. So this has always been chaotic coming in this place. It's always.
Anything else?
Article four. To see if the town will vote to appropriate a total of ten thousand four hundred and ninety dollars from the unassigned fund balance to ratify the overdrafts in the transfer station account for FY twenty-three, FY twenty-four. Ed?
Sure. Let me best to try to explain this one. Uh, over the last three years, we've, the numbers for, that's all for the, uh.
Halling.
The hauling and the.
Demo.
Demo. There we go. Yeah, sorry. It's getting late. Um, so we did a, we did some research on those numbers from twenty-two to twenty-four. Twenty-two was a hundred and fourteen thousand and change. Twenty-three was a hundred and twenty-one thousand and change, and twenty-four was a hundred and fifty-four. Now, we've had some increases. I'm just trying to explain some history here. We've had some increases from our contractors or our, our company that we used to get rid of it, and we've also had, in talking to our superintendent, a huge increase in the amount of demo material that comes in. Now the demo is anything from a wooden screen door to someone that's rebuilding their deck on their house, to, uh, some interior work people are doing, sheet rock, anything to with, with basically wood and, and their property, not municipal solid waste, which is trash. So it's the other things that, that we give you at the transfer station. There's two dumpsters up there that that's where the, those products will win. So there's been quite an increase in that, uh, along with a contractual increase. Uh, so the ten thousand four hundred and ninety is the overdraft that we're in right now, uh, between what we had at the transfer station. We, we actually were over by twenty-four thousand six hundred and eighty-four in using leftover monies in that account for the transfer station. Those numbers were able to be brought down to a deficit of ten thousand four ninety. There was six invoices that came in after July first, uh, between July and August of this year, that we weren't, that we weren't expecting. Uh, we thought they were already in. They, they came in afterwards, and this is pine tree waste, Triano Waste, which is the hauling company, uh, Punske Scrap Metal. Uh, these invoices needed to be paid. So where we sit right now is a negative ten thousand four ninety. Uh, was there anything else I can explain on that? So it's something we definitely don't want, we don't like, and it's the first time that I can ever remember having an account that, having a, an account that went in the negative. So, questions?
I may be mistaken on this. I thought that at some point, if someone were going to do a sizable amount of demo, they had to get a permit from the code enforcement officers?
So the, the demo permits, um, were done away with around COVID. They were free anyways. Um, but that was tracking. The board is talking about looking into how we're going to handle this going forward. I mean, unfortunately, and this is, you know, to no one's fault, these, all these bills that Ed explained were four hauls that happened in June, so you had to pay them the prior year. And, you know, the, the transfer station staff is, you know, they're estimating how often they're going to call, but depending on, on how often people come in, it's just, you know, it's, it's one of those things. You're just, it's hard to, to nail it right down. But we're looking at different ways with the assessor to go back to possibly tracking it. A, make sure that material is from Acton, right? But the staff is doing their best to do that. I mean, everybody's got stickers there, you know? You can only question so much if you've got, you know, sticker and the, um, but they're looking at policies and procedures to go forward. But, but honestly, I mean, shutting down the transfer station, we dedicate for the demo that the resident, the property owners brought in.
So this is, um, homeowners bringing their own.
Property owners.
Property owners.
Property owners.
Bringing their own demolition.
Right. Maybe they fit down a shed, maybe they throw a couch away. It's demo.
Yeah, couches, chairs, furniture.
Refrigerators.
Uh, the employees at the transfer station do their best to break this stuff up and get it compacted as best they can. Uh, the company that we use, Punske, doesn't like the idea of us crushing it in the container. It damages their container. We don't own the containers. So we have to be careful on that side. We get anywhere, they get anywhere between three to forty-five, uh, forty-five to, to five thousand pounds, uh, per container or tons, one of the other.
Three to five ton.
Three to five ton per container, uh, which is, you know, pretty good.
Yeah.
But when you're talking two to four of those containers going up a week, you're talking some sizable money, because it's, it assets up a thousand dollars every time one of those containers is taken away for the disposal fee, the trucking fee.
Fuel charge.
Fuel surcharge and the container cost.
Hi, Joyce Batshe. I think the other thing that, um, first of all, I want to say that our superintendent does a great job at the dump. I think he really, you know, they really try. They got a, a good team up there as well. But one of the things we have, a couple of things we have to remember always. Nobody sends out their bills thinking of, when is Acton's fiscal year over? So we're going to get bills at the end of the fiscal year, in July and August, maybe even September, who knows? But they have to be paid out of the budget they were spent in. We have no control over that. The other thing is, we don't have control over any of the people, uh, you mentioned, Ed, just company eight. If they decide, you know, a hundred dollars a ton is not enough, we're going to charge a hundred and twenty-five. Guess what? We're going to pay a hundred and twenty-five. Yeah. And I think we have to remember, I think anybody in here, I know where I live on, on Square Pond, the amount of building that's going up right now. Camps are being taken down. Houses are being built. You've got stuff in each case. You've got stuff from the camp that's being taken down, and you've got stuff left over from the building. That's all going, and you don't know. Is that builder from the campship, the contractor? Where are they from? You know, um, I believe one time the superintendent of the transfer station even suggested a fee, that, you know, you want to dump here? Okay. You're going to pay X amount of dollars a year, period. Not every time you dump, but, you know, you're in the business of making money. Money needs money. You're going to have to get a, a license to do it, and maybe we have to charge them. But, you know, I, I think it's just, just pay it and go on with it. Thank you.
We're paying right now a hundred and fifty-five dollars a ton is what we're being charged to dispose of the, of the things in the container. So just to give you an idea, you know, what the cost, uh, three to five tons, you know, in the container. It's three hundred dollars every time the trucking company hauls it. It's a seventy-five dollar fuel surcharge every time they haul it as well. So three seventy-five, just to haul the container, get it dumped, and bring it back. So, you know, it's, unfortunately, it's expensive. We're one of the few towns, if not maybe the only town, that doesn't charge our citizens. that doesn't charge our citizens to dispose of demo. One of my past jobs was watching that and handling it for the town of Rollinsford. And we did charge down there. Every time someone brought a pickup truck load in, an eight-foot pickup truck load, just for instance, was, I think, $65 to dispose of it, regardless of what was in it. You know, whether it was couch and chair and... Couches and chairs had fixed numbers. So the demo that would be in that truck was like 65 bucks. It's something I, I don't know whether we need to stop thinking about that or not. But either way, it's expensive to get rid of this stuff. Right now, there's a tri-county group that we're in with. We're going through some negotiations right now to try to come up with a better price structure for what we're paying. The contract comes up next June, but we're working on it right now with the hopes of getting it in place sooner or the latest be ready for that. And the numbers are looking a little bit more favorable than what we're paying right now. I can't go into the numbers because it's part of a contract negotiation, but I'm one of the four people on that committee trying to work through that.
I just, I don't have any problem with what's being asked for. And I wanted to say, in my opinion, if the superintendent and the staff at the transfer station are asking for something, that they need it. And I really applaud them, as others have said. I see Robin in particular both doing things and then requesting his staff do things that save us all money. So if he needs money, he's asking for money, I say they need it. I also think that something needs to be done about cost containment and that it's great that we can currently dispose of things. Three, maybe there needs to be a limitation on what each resident gets. I also, you know, I'm not saying anything is going on, but I do have a question as to whether some of what's hauled in to our transfer station necessarily comes from Acton. There are commercial haulers whose vehicles display the proper federal numbers, whatever it is, to be transporting from other states. So I think it at least begs the question, and we need to address it. Also, if we are going to give coupons or whatever so that each resident can dispose of a limited quantity of things, then we're going to have to deal with the Acton Mall or swap shack also because people, even though it's free to dispose of items, they bring so many items to the swap shack that should be disposed of. So if we then start saying, well, you only can dispose of a limited number of things for free, then we have to make sure that everything doesn't all of a sudden start coming down. That's something that Robin can figure out, I'm sure. But like others have said, I think we need to do something to address cost containment.
The other thing you have to be careful of too, or be cognizant of, if you do start charging to get rid of the demo, switching to couches, chairs, furniture, things like that, you're going to find them in different parts of the town rather than the transfer station. I've seen that happen in other towns. Rather than taking that couch to the transfer station and paying your $15 to get rid of it, you'll end up seeing it sitting down on the hopper road with a little ponders.
Lawn roads where they always...
Yeah, so I mean, it's happened before, but it may possibly increase that. Just something to keep in mind, you know. Personally, I don't like the idea of charging, but at some point in time, the tax dollar can't absorb everything that we do. So.
All right. Okay. Article five. See if the town will vote to appropriate $14,150 from the unassigned fund balance for transfer station expenses for the current FY '24, '25 year. Ed?
Yes. That number is, so back up, back in June?
Yes.
The skid steer that we have up there developed a very serious oil leak. It was taken to John Deere, United Ag and Turf. It's a John Deere piece of equipment, so that's where it went. To have that looked at and figure out what's going on. So we were down to skid steer. So that number is the amount of money that we've paid in rental only.
To the end of this month.
Yeah, through the end of this month.
So we, this is moved one in through November.
Okay, so through the end of November.
So knowing that the hauling costs are high, we're hoping to reimburse the transfer station so they don't have to eat that cost since they're already over last year. And hopefully you'll also support that first article for municipal management contingency. So hauling continues the board if they had to, could move it from there. So we're trying to keep the number down as low as possible.
So that's the offset, a totally unknown thing that happened up there. So we needed a piece of equipment. For a while, Robin actually brought his own tractor in. It worked for a while, but it's not, it's too cumbersome to do what they were trying to do. So we opted to rent a skid steer and put that in there. So that's what that one is for. Questions?
All right, seeing that, article six. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $55,819 from the unassigned fund balance for the purchase of a skid steer.
So we got into this, we discovered the skid steer had a massive oil leak. Took it down to United Ag. They looked it over, they checked it all through. They deemed it was going to be a $16,000 repair. Now, this is a $16,000 repair to a 2006 piece of equipment with approximately $2,700 on it. And the worth of the machine in running order is 20,000?
Probably 16.
16, yeah.
If we were to sell one of this, I'd bet it'd be lucky to get 10.
Yeah, so we basically felt that the cost of the repair was too close to the cost of the value of the machine, which doesn't make, you know, you're not going to put good money after that.
And we also looked at it, whenever you have a machine that old, and I know because I deal with this all the time, when you start getting in the early 2000s, your hydraulics sealed, pistons sort of weeping, just one thing right after another, it's that nickel and dime, yeah? And when we were looking at the cost of fixing it, $16,000, whether or not it was worth it or not, it's, you know, you start putting the numbers together, it's a big... There's a difference between the new one and that one, but what you get in the long run.
Right, right. You end up, yeah, you end up jumping up in technology and whatnot. So we did, we put out the bid, we got six bids on it. The bids ranged from $55,819 to over $70,000. Six different companies, six different pieces of equipment. Basically, we boiled it down to, let's see what this $55,000 machine is. It's a Kubota. Both Slavman Winchell and myself went to Kubota. We looked at it, we drove it, we tried it. It's one of the cases where a low bid works. It also includes a new bucket, new set of forks, a snow pusher, the big square snow pusher rig that go on the front of it to help clean the snow up there. Whatever else we have for buckets and forks and whatnot up there may or may not go with the old machine, but it all will fit this one as well. So what we're looking for is, what we're proposing is to spend the $55,819 on a new machine and bring us up 19 years or 18 years into the machine.
Good idea.
And then at some point, you know, dispose of the other one. Bid up the bid or whatever.
So the machine, basically, the amount of hours on it is half one oh.
At least.
You know what I mean? I mean, you talk to any dealer, I mean, they're all looking at 5,000 hours of oil. And we could have fixed it for 16... Instead of doing that, we're going to be spending close to 70.
55.
Exactly, the rental.
Well, plus the rental.
Well, plus the rental, yeah. We hadn't really planned on going this long on the rental.
No, I appreciate that.
You know, but due to other things.
Do what you had to do.
Yeah, yeah.
I get no issue with needing a skid steer up there. Fact is, when that was bought, I was, I think I was on the Warren Finance at the time, and I pushed to get that up there. And it hasn't really been overworked.
No.
It isn't like it'd be out on a normal job site. It's had a pretty easy life and it's been pretty well maintained. I'm not going to go against this, but I don't agree with not fixing it because it could easily get another 10 years out of it.
Thank you, Dennis.
Oh, he's talking about?
What sort of warranty did you get with this machine?
What that had, what that had, at least a year.
It had a two-year warranty. It was the same warranty, just but everything, I think California was less than that. But just but with everything else, I haven't got the EPL right in front of me now. I think it was two years.
Two years. What sort of maintenance agreement do you, who's going to maintain this machine?
Well, we'll go with the MB tractor. We didn't go ahead and do a maintenance plan on it, per se, meaning... Because I'm sure we could have, we could have done every so many hours, they'd come up and do it, but that would just come in as added cost. They will come up and do the service on-site as needed.
Did you get a price?
No, well, no, we haven't done that.
Should you have gotten a price?
Well, they're going to give you an hourly rate. They're not going to give you a price. Nobody gives you a price to come out on-site doing it. They give you mileage, hourly, and then material costs.
So how often would you maintain, change the oil?
Every 500 hours or every 2,000 hours on the, well, depending on, it might be $1,000 on the hydraulic.
So 500 hours, what are you going to do? Are you going to call them? Are you going to have somebody on-site who works for the town changing it?
Whoever's, whoever's the supervisor up there, that's going to be their job. That's part of his maintenance plan, just like you would change your oil in the compactor, the filters, whatever, same idea.
Okay, but what about leaky rams or other things like that? Would you call MB from that or?
Yeah, I mean, their Kubota dealer, I mean, that was, no doubt. They're really the only Kubota dealer in the area because they bought everybody off, but...
What was the old skid steer worth and what are you going to do with it?
I think it's worth, it's not worth much more than 15 to 20.
Well, it ain't worth nothing right now.
Right.
I mean, it's broken down. So anybody who's going to buy it for 16,000, you know, put $16,000 into it.
Well, I mean, it's for scrap or for parts.
Well, no, somebody could buy it if they know. And Joe Schmo might be able to put something together and might be able to fix it, but we got a quote for 16,000. And if you, if anybody knows how this works, when you take a piece of equipment into a... Oh, I found this wrong, this wrong, this wrong. It could have been $25,000. Believe me, I know how that works.
The way the machine is today, what are you going to do with it?
Well, what we were talking about doing was, we were talking about putting on a municipal like everybody else is doing. It's a website where all municipalities, they put their stuff for sale, guys like me.
Do you think it would bring 1,500 bucks, a couple thousand bucks, or would it?
Oh, I never know. It may bring in five, six grand, but right now, I'm not running, it's parts, it's a parts machine right now. You're right.
Well, it's a good engine and who knows what else.
But until you invest the time into it, getting back to it.
You paid what, $2,500 for them to take it apart to tell you what was wrong with it?
Well, it was $3,000, I think.
$3,000, yeah.
So, yeah, by the time we ended up doing it, we had $19,000, $20,000 into it. And I'm going to say that $2,600 on a skid steer is a lot different than $2,600 on other equipment. You know, you have hydraulic. And I run a lot of equipment, I buy a lot of equipment. And I have a skid steer with $1,400 on it. They started nickel and dime it with $1,400. The mine's a 2019. So for anybody to say they got 10 more years, well, you might have 10 weeks before the next thing goes wrong.
No, I was just wondering what you were going to do with the machine that's been, you know, replaced.
I think we're still assessing it.
Well, we are. We're going to see what happens here. If we get the money voted, then no doubt, we're going to keep it around. You never know, but...
First thing is get to know one and then we'll figure out what you don't want.
Yeah. Put the carpet full of ours.
I'd like to make a proposal to the board. As far as the skid steer goes, I'm a equipment mechanic, most of you know that. Given the hours of the machine, not knowing the maintenance program, it's probably in the best interest of the town to acquire a new piece. But what I would propose to the board is that that machine, I would estimate, just rough guessing, between $5,000 and $10,000 in values as a used piece. Either we have an auction bid or whatever with the town open, you know, to whoever with a, I propose a minimum bid of, say, $5,000. Up to, or the other option would be that we send the machine to an auction, auction house somewhere and let them sell it. And depending on, the hours are a little bit lower than other pieces that at an auction, it might actually do better than it would to just offer it up for bid. So, and if, after that, whatever money is acquired from that, obviously should go, I would propose to maintenance costs on the future machine and be designated for maintenance costs on the future machine, whether it's a repair or just preventive maintenance.
What would happen is that money then go into the general fund. And then what?
General fund?
When you're, whoever's the supervisor or worker is doing that, they'll have that in their maintenance budget every year. So either way.
It just comes back out.
It'll come back out.
I mean, what I wanted to say also, that people here can know that even if that machine is repaired, something else will probably break on it soon. So I'm probably, I'm just saying it'd be in the best interest, I think, to continue with this.
And you talk about an auction. So if you ever, this municipal, what it does is, you put your piece of equipment on there and it's on there for like a week, a week or two. And you bid in, then nobody can see your bid. Then the bid will keep going up and up and up and up, or they can't tell. And then towards the end, it's like an auction. You're all bidding the next person.
Well, it's like E-Bank.
Yeah, what's that?
It's like E-Bank.
Yeah, it's kind of like that, but you just keep going until the last. And you don't want to be the last guy because you think you're going to wait till the last second and you put bid in, then they extend it.
So you can set a minimum on that.
You can set a minimum.
Yeah, so anyways, that was my suggestion.
Yep, appreciate it.
Thank you for the information on it. Valuable coming from you.
All right, moving on to article seven. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $130,000 from the unassigned fund balance to increase the deputy contract law enforcement services in Acton from 20 to 40 hours a week and purchase a patrol car. John?
Okay. So currently, we're paying about $70,000 a year for our 20-hour sheriff. Said we share a chapter. Now, people in town have wanted a greater presence. So we started looking into it. And what we would get for a 40-hour sheriff would be anywhere in the range from $120,000 to someone inexperienced to $150,000 for somebody similar to what we have now. And then we would be needing to purchase a car for approximately $53,000. Currently, we started this year or late last year paying to have a sheriff do blocks of time and extending his hours to do speed control and whatever. And we've put out $3,000 on that this year. So if we had our own designated, we would have to do that. We would have a greater presence in town. He would know the town better. And it's just something that we're looking into right now. So anybody has any questions? So, anybody has any questions?
Currently, we have three forms of law enforcement in this town. We have a full-time officer, we have the sheriff's department, we have the state police. My question would be changing from basically doubling the cost of having our, what crimes in town do we have that aren't getting addressed with the type of situation we have right now, the law enforcement? What's, what's not getting done to justify doubling the hours, I guess? Is my question.
Well, I think it's just, we're looking to the future, and, you know, there's been a lot in the past of the sheriff's department dropping certain towns, and we've considered going beyond this, and this, we just thought would be the first step into having our town more secure.
So this would have nothing to do with the sheriff's department?
This has everything to do with the sheriff's department. The sheriff's department, to my knowledge, is the only, we don't have state police coverage here, per se.
Yes, we do.
Do?
Well, we do and we don't. The state police are now taking, they don't wanna take care of these towns like Lebanon and all the small towns now.
Right.
There was a state police officer at the annual offering San Pedro yesterday.
There was?
Just sitting there, and that's why I say, yes.
Because I've never seen, I've never seen one in town.
Because I saw him yesterday.
I thought we were just controlled by York County Sheriff's Department, this whole area.
State police also.
State police have jurisdiction in the entire state of Maine.
Right.
York County Sheriff's Department covers Acton, and it's possible that you see one rarely passing through, but there's probably a specific reason.
They don't want to do this.
No, I know, that's the reason.
I believe when there's a call...
And he was still sitting there when I went back.
I believe when there's a call for, you know, domestic or whatever it might be, York County responds, not the state police. So, while they may be in town for whatever reason, it's my understanding they don't routinely provide coverage to the town.
And the sheriff of the town?
Is that right?
Covers all of us in Old Chapel. Does he use law?
So the sheriff...
The sheriff covers us, Chapel, and water.
So, this would still be a contract with the sheriff's department?
Still your contract. Sheriff was here a few weeks ago discussing this.
So, we could be in the same boat that we were put into last, this last year, that we didn't know if the sheriff was going to extend that contract or not, and the contract, because I understand it, is the sheriff's department can cancel the contract at any time without any default, but if we cancel the contract, we have to pay the remainder of the contract.
That's not true.
I think we both have 90 days.
They changed that.
Yes, this contract.
They have 90-day notice, and we do as well, if I understand it.
So, but we're still under the, if, it isn't like having our own police officer, is what I'm saying. We're, because we still have, the sheriff is still gonna make the final decision whether or not we have somebody to cover this area or not.
Right, but if we contract with a full-time officer, he basically is our, our officer. He's not gonna be going to Chapel.
Right, all it's doing is dissolve in Chapel. So right now, we have a 40-hour contract, 20 hours in Chapel, 20 hours in Acton, give or take. This is dissolve in Chapel's piece of it, and us picking up the entire 40-hour contract. Sheriff has already agreed to the contract, it's no different if we were doing with Chapel or alone. Nothing changes short of we're no longer sharing another town. Acton would get all 40 hours.
But he'll still go to other towns when necessary?
No.
You'd see what...
If there's emergencies, he's supposed to only go on emergencies.
And also, my big gripe, on overtime, he may be somewhere else, so he will be covering other areas.
The 40 hours that we're contracting for will be here.
Now, do you get a timesheet on that?
We tried that, that didn't work.
No, it's a great question. I, I...
That was part of our negotiations last year, when we asked for that.
I think, I think when you, from what I understand, when you, you two met with the sheriff, he was more forthcoming and accommodating than we thought they had been in previous negotiations.
Right.
I think there was somebody in between us and the sheriff that perhaps was, you know, complicating things, and now you reached out and talked directly to the sheriff, and I think he's more supportive, if you understand what I'm saying.
Understand this last, that year, there was a lot of negative, negative talk towards whether we were getting what we wanted or not from the sheriff's department.
That's right.
So, it's a lot of money.
Further case in please. 130,000 dollars. How's that 130 is 51,000 gonna pay for the car?
53.
Or 53,000? So that leaves how much to pay to the deputy?
This is for half a year.
We only have half appropriated through our fiscal year.
We're funding through June. Our fiscal year runs through June, so we're funded for half sheriff through June.
We have money for half.
The contract with the, with the sheriff's department expires in December.
Yes, it does. We are funded in our budget through June.
Okay. So, how much is this deputy actually going to cost us to get the car? What's the deputy's cost going to be?
Already told you.
120, 150?
Yep.
Lot of money.
It is.
Lot of money, especially when you don't control the deputies. I can tell you right now, you can say what you want, I know you met with Sheriff King, there are a lot of things you don't know about Sheriff King, as to where he came from.
Well, we're not, we're not, I'm not a fan either of all, but we're not going there tonight.
I understand that, and I didn't need you to butt in. Thank you, sir. Be respectful, please.
What, what, what?
Respectful, please.
What do I do?
I didn't ask you to butt in. I was in the comments, and you shut me down.
And my job, my job is to run this meeting, and I do not like giving the personal attacks. That's all I was talking.
Okay. The sheriff is going to determine where his deputies go, when they go. I understand we have a contract for 40 hours, but if he wants to pull our deputy and send him somewhere else, guess what's gonna happen? He's gone. That's all I'm saying. Do we actually need to have a full-time deputy? I don't know that the crime rate justifies that, to be honest with you.
That's not for vote at a special meeting.
That's true, that's true, and I'm just expressing...
And I appreciate everybody's opinion on it.
Okay.
It's something we bring forward. If we didn't bring it forward, you wouldn't know, and you wouldn't be able to vote on it.
No, that's true. And we still be talking about, let's create our own police department. Not gonna happen.
I do just wanna add a comment. This was a well-thought-out process, which I would say, we took some extra shifts this past year from the sheriff's department, and it was well-received by the people of Acton, which is why we even considered this. We had a lot of people who said, we're speeding on my road, I have concerns, and we listened, we assigned the deputy to be in those places, and the response that we got back was highly positive. And part of the thought process behind this was, if we're gonna be paying money for a deputy, we would like to know that they are what we're paying for in Acton, not potentially in Chapel. So that was a thought process we had. But also, the feedback that we have from residents, which is, which is why we thought to go in this route, because everyone was saying we appreciate it, we've seen a change, an impact, in response to like, is there a need? And that's part of this contract, is seeing if this does make a positive impact, and we can decide, there was a need, and we addressed it, so let's keep with this contract. So, I do want to just name that this board did take considerations, occurred concerns of residents, and it was really well thought out, and that's why we're presenting it, and it's, again, up to residents to make the decision whether or not you think we need this.
If I could add something as well. I've been sitting here each month listening to Jennifer read the report. We're both acting in Chapel, and as I think about the police, it's, law enforcement, they're important when you need them. And right now, if someone's traveling from another community, because they're, the sheriff is spread all around, response time is, can be delayed because they aren't in the community. And response time is important when someone's in need, and so it really comes down to a public safety issue. It's not, it's the same kind of, it's the same concept as you have with the fire department. They have to be here and provide a good response time in order to protect property and lives. I think the same thing is true for law enforcement, and so this, this may be something the community doesn't want, I guess we'll find out when we get to town meeting, but I think if you just look at the raw police reports and stats, I don't know, maybe it doesn't get somebody there, but all you need is one, and it took the sheriff 45 minutes to get here. That, to me, is what I, I think we owe our citizens the protection as best we can get, representing a reasonable investment, and personally, I think this is in line with that.
That we're putting it forward.
Yeah.
And that's what we're supposed to do, is do what we think is right. We put it forward. If you put it down, we try.
We try.
On the issue with the sheriff, I wanna strongly recommend that this is probably not enough, as far as I'm concerned, and the reason I say this is because what the other gentleman said, there, there's no guarantee, I don't think we have any guarantee, maybe we can get a contract that will guarantee that we're gonna have the full 40-hour service of the sheriffs, because right now, the sheriff's department, coverage of our town is virtually nonexistent. Dennis mentioned about what crimes in town, there's a lot of crimes in town, maybe you're not aware, but my wife and I get pulled up every, I mean, I'm gonna say, three, three out of seven nights a week, we are welcomed by screeching tires, speeding cars, pickup trucks with absolutely no mufflers on them, and I, I mean, you know, everybody out there having fun. I was young once, I did the same kind of stuff. I did in a back road where there wasn't any houses, okay? But I mean, we're talking about, I don't know how many people were killed, but there was definitely injuries in front of iron tales this year, and a lot of it has to do with speed, pure and simple. We have no, we have no traffic enforcement in this town at all, none. It's Dukes and Hazzard, okay? And, but my concern, like I said, is, are we really gonna get the sheriff's department to do something? I spoke with Sheriff King a few times on issues that I thought concerned our town, and he talks a big game, but when it comes down to it, I, he does lack, but we'll stop You know, the, I gotta say, we're lucky in Acton, we have a lot of people who watch out for each other, but we are gifted that we haven't had more break-ins and stuff. I have stuff on my property that could easily be stolen with a pickup truck and a trailer. This is on TV. Yeah, and under Maine law, if somebody is in your, on your property, or in your home, you, you really, unless you're cornered, you, you can't, you can't defend your, your house or whatever, like I said, unless you're cornered, you, you can't protect your property that you, you worked your whole life for, or maybe you earn a living with. I mean, like I said, we're gifted that our town hasn't been basically picked clean. And a lot of that, a lot of the thefts and stuff I've heard about, and I've experienced a couple of things, were mostly from people just over the border in New Hampshire. They like Maine. So, this, I don't think goes far enough, but forward is we can have a guarantee of coverage.
Well, we, well, we were talking about possibly having our own police force, because the only, the problem we had was, the sheriff's department wasn't guaranteeing us that we were gonna get into a long-term deal. The last contract we signed, they only did it for one year. So that makes you really think, okay, well, they're only gonna do it for one year, they were talking about not even, they, they couldn't man up or personnel for that one individual member, we were out like four or five months there, you know, we didn't have that sheriff, okay? Because you couldn't find people to take the spot. And then that nice thing, you know, well, we're only doing one-year contracts, so we started thinking, well, we might have to look further down the road, or what, you know, we might be stuck without any, you know, part-time deputy, okay? So that, so Ed and John did some research, and the numbers looked pretty scary. I'm not a big fan of this contract at all. I'm not.
I'd rather see a town police force, honestly.
Well, so that's where, that's where I'm going, but I look, I look at the contract that we're, we're paying, we've been paying since, I don't know how many years we've been doing so, I can't remember, but a long time. I'm the guy that sits back, goes, well, we pay our county tax, we should be getting this coverage anyways, then they come in and say, okay, well, we're gonna, we're gonna give you a guy for 20, 20-year guy, girl, whatever, for 20 hours a week, and it's gonna spend whatever, okay? And they try and throw another guy, then, oh, then we're gonna give you another one too. So, I hope I'm not talking anybody out of this, but I tell you the thing, but at the end of the day is this, the people of town in Acton seem to, to really like having their sheriff, and so I think the board has looked at it, going, okay, well, either we go, we go that full-time, which sounds like a lot of money, and we've been wanting more time, so this is, this is our solution. And it's a starting point.
And I like what Tom said, the response time is a big deal, and, yeah, if somebody is in the middle of the night on your property, doing whatever, and it takes 45 minutes...
I saw a domestic dispute go down, called the cops, they show up 45 minutes, an hour later.
Somebody could be dead.
And that's the only time that I've ever told who I was. I said, I'm a selectman in the town of Acton, I, I signed your check, okay? And it took 45 minutes to get here. I almost had to get involved in something that I didn't wanna get involved in. I was not happy. That, but that's why, if we could get something like this, maybe that would happen less often.
Thank you.
I don't know what the measure of crime is in community, because the less law enforcement we have, the more crime we don't know about, because it isn't charged, it isn't addressed. I do know from the reports that Jennifer reads on a regular basis, that we have some pretty concerning crime involving physical harmed people, and that's the biggest thing, you know? If somebody loses a skidder off their yard, obviously that's a big deal, but it's not the same as an aggravated assault, for example. Yes, response time matters, and particularly with crimes against people, like a domestic violence charge, and it's not only getting somebody there and addressing it, it's, the longer it takes for a law enforcement office to appear, the more likely it is that the victim in that case is gonna be intimidated out of filing a report.
Yeah.
Because they've been left with their perpetrator for 45 minutes waiting for someone to come. So, I do think that an increased law enforcement presence makes a lot of sense. I have been really pleased with the extra details. I noticed over Labor Day weekend, I was very happy to drive 109 and see people stopped repeatedly, you know? Law enforcement in a town gives a really strong message to people about what will be tolerated and what won't. And if we don't have law enforcement presence in Acton, then people, I think, particularly from other towns, think, well, I can speed through Acton. I mean, I'm tired of people riding the bumper of my car, particularly with out-of-state plates, you know? If I wanna drive the speed limit, I wanna drive the speed limit, and I don't want an SUV riding my bumper. I have a traumatic brain injury from someone hitting my car from behind, and frankly, the post-traumatic stress that I feel when somebody's riding my bumper is off the chart. I do have a couple of questions. One is the vehicle. If it's purchased, does it belong to the town of Acton? Does it stay here, or does the deputy take it home? Do they use it in other jurisdictions, if they're assigned to other jurisdictions? I would be interested to know that.
Yes to all of them.
What's that?
Yes to all of them. Yes to all of the questions.
They take it home?
They do.
And it gets used in other jurisdictions?
If they run overtime or cover a shift or get called out, they do take that car with them.
So, okay, well, I mean, maybe that's something that can be fine.
The problem we have is, we, we, we got into that whole deal. We thought, but the problem what happens is that officer stays with that car. You don't jump from car to car to car. So that officer, you know, and obviously they want to go overtime, this and that. They stay with their car, so it makes it tough to.
The car is ours.
Total, then another town has it's office.
So if the sheriff's department cancels the contract, we get the car back, guys. Because it belongs to this town.
Absent all the equipment. They upend it. I believe they take all the equipment out of it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. What is the difference as to the payroll? Not the car, but the payroll between what we have now and what's being proposed?
It's twice.
It's twice as much?
When we're doubling, we're doubling our hours.
Yeah, okay, okay. I, I did just want to say with that, and I'm not going to get into personalities. But I do think there is a difference when one is dealing with an elected public official versus a hired individual in a department. So if you had, you know, I don't really have an opinion yet whether we have a police department or not. Should have one. But if we did, we would hire the chief and he or she would report to us. As long as you have a sheriff, you have an elected official, and politics is politics.
I believe we, we could buy a car or cap a car this year anyway.
They have my car anyways, yes. I know if you stay, if you don't do this on your own and you stay with Chapley, they've already notified us that we will need another car. Because this car has, my legend, it's been taken off the road per the sheriff's department. We will own it, own it half with Chapley. We'll have to work out a buyout. But either way, there's another car.
Who has it for replacement anyway?
Look, Steve, and I've come before you guys a few times already about the speeding on Eeshaw Drive. You folks don't want to address it. I've approached three different of the sheriff people sitting on the side of the road and asked them if they could help us out. And what they asked me to do is to videotape the speeding cars and bring it to you.
What?
Yeah.
Say it again?
That's not, that's not what they should be doing.
We'll take it over there.
Yeah, I mean, you can call her. Or that number.
Yeah, on the hill ride.
I mean, the board is actually, you know, I'm, let me talk to you off, off camera.
Did the sheriff actually tell you that?
Yeah, one of the deputies.
Okay, well.
I was looking video for incidents before too, for me.
Videos for incident is different than video for incidents and turn it into the town hall. I mean, that's.
We can't do anything about that.
Before the extra duty, we have specified what roads they should be policing. So I think they just need to.
They're never on Eeshaw Drive. I went there once when you spoke to him. He was there for one hour on a Friday. He wrote a ticket and never saw him again. But anyway, we have road monitors. Maybe some of the people on my road don't know that, you know, how fast they're going. But, you know, maybe that would help. I was told there was two of them that broke broke.
Oh, those signs?
No, we have, we have our sign. It was moved all around town. Families haven't moved.
It was going broke out for a little while, but it got fixed.
Maybe that might help a little bit. But anyway, getting to this, I think it's an awful lot of money just for a cop to sit on the side of the road and just monitor. That's kind of a lot of money. It's an extravagant amount for a small little town that we have. I mean, I, I think it's been working pretty well. I've been here 26 years and it's been working pretty well with the, you know? At one time it used to be we got babysat by the police, state police one month, following month was the, the upcoming. And then that went away and now we're back.
So you just said it's working well the way it is, but then you just can't tell us nobody's on your road parking cars.
Because they don't want to, they don't want to come down my road. They'd rather stay up on the main road and they have a better potential. They don't want to waste any time, that's what I was told by another.
We can change that.
We can't waste any time.
That's under these side roads.
We can.
That is within control. I'm here on your side.
But again, this is a lot of money. I, I just don't think this small town should be spending that kind of money.
If you just wanted to name that, like you talked about, we've had, we've been stopped by this, we used to have a state and now the sheriff's. Law enforcement personnel is getting less and less throughout the state. I was a member of the legislative policy committee, talking to other towns. That's something that we've seen with the academy, there's not as many people going through it. So having a sheriff, a deputy like this guarantees us that we have a quality deputy. I mean, they're not seeing as many candidates go through because the process to go through the academy is hard. So times are changing. So, I mean, we talked about wanting to have someone here in town present. Like, like we talked about, we're going to see less and less presence unless we're putting in money for those hours. Because they're going to be stretched thing going to other places because there's going to be less and less people graduating from the academy going into this field. So that's something to take in consideration long-term. It's something they're seeing across the state is trying to make candidates to go into this field.
The guarantee 20 dollars. Under this contract, we guarantee 20 dollars.
Right. That, that salary number is not just salaries. They have very extensive benefits in terms of retirement and compensation pay and so on. So it's, it's a, it's a, I wouldn't be surprised if the benefits are in excess of 30% of the number.
Next year is 150 and the following year is 20.
Yeah.
It's low-holes.
And for a small town, we're trying to control costs and that's something we could put into our budget. I don't know.
I'm really wrong for, and I, this is a real hard dilemma to really solve. The problem, from my perspective, it's very hard for me to think that a town the size of Acton can justify having a fire, a police department on its own. Because if the county sheriff's departments haven't struggling getting candidates, qualified people to come in, how are we going to do that? And so to me, maybe the direction should be on political action of getting the towns to try to put more pressure on the county to increase their staffing levels to fill the void. Because the efficiency of working through the county is going to be better than every town having 24-hour coverage, which is where you have to end up being. 40 hours is, is better than 20 hours, but there's still 24 hours in the day. So I, I, I don't have, I don't, I don't have an answer for any of this, other than we're putting a Band-Aid on a big problem. And I'm not sure that it's really going to resolve anything. It's going to cost more.
Lee, I, I told that to the county commissioner and, and Mr. King, that I would rather pay a little extra of my county tax.
Absolutely.
Because we're pretty much doing the same thing, but unfortunately, they're not doing that. So they put us in this predicament. So, but you're right, you're 100% right though.
I just don't understand how the, what, it's just going to be too costly for our, every little town to have its own standalone police departments. It just doesn't work. Can't.
Do any of you remember the conversation where the sheriff indicated how many patrolmen they had?
We actually have an influx right now, is what he told us.
But it was down very low for the entire county. It was, it was scary. You learned just how few deputies there are.
Well, thank you for the work you did. I'm trying to figure out, excuse me, how it works. So 40 hours, does all the crime happen during nine to five?
There you go. Good point.
But I mean, how does, how does that work?
It would probably adjust, adjust his hours daily.
But you're still waiting 45 minutes if something happens. If it happened, then not pick that hour to be here. Right. So you're right. Right now, I mean, it's, I think we're making more of it. I mean, we have the seven days in a week. We have 24 hours in a day. That time doesn't change. Right now, he's here 20 hours. You either want to double it to 40, you want to leave it to 20, or you could, you know, not, not have it at all and just take your county taxes and they'll get here when they get here. I mean, his schedule is set by union and the sheriff's department. They purposely don't advertise it so that nobody knows when he's on. Somebody's always covering Acton with county tax. There's always somebody. So this is just, do you want 40 hours in addition? Are you happy with the 20?
Yeah.
I mean, it's just that simple. But the, the schedule, I'm the only one that gets it, and it, it does fluctuate often.
Okay. So I don't think we need 40. I think 20's fine. And we go from having 10,000 for extra patrols to 130,000. So I think there's some kind of middle ground there to catch speeders. That's my.
No, we can keep following that. See what happens at town meeting.
I knew there was one last thing. Acton is a lovely little town. I love it here. Small town, all those things. But there, there is no more Mayberry USA in this country anymore. And we are, by composition, we are small, we are rural, a lot of people have firearms. And we are the prime stereotypical town where you could have an incident in our schools, for example. And I, I get the which hours of the day, but certainly during the daytime, I'd feel better if we had a sheriff here so that if we did have an incident, we would have a really prompt response to our school department. And maybe that person, you know, not all of what a law enforcement officer does is law enforcement. You know, there's education component, there's presence at the school and so forth. But I just think we do need to realize, assess, our risk factor may be different than what we think just because we're in a nice little small town. It's probably higher.
Just to address that, does Wakefield still respond if there's an emergency? Wakefield, their little police department, do they come around?
They don't always stay alive.
Not at all? Thank you.
All right.
Just very quickly, I understand what Brian was saying and what everybody else has said. The thing is, number one, citizens should know our school is very well protected. And I can't tell you today if it's our superintendent or our principal, because now we have two different people, have a direct line to law enforcement. If anything happens at the school, the school is very well protected. They have been having classes on ALPS, which is the new, the latest what do you should do with an intruder in the school. So that's a very good thing. But we have a lot of dirt roads. We have a lot of private roads. I think, and my feeling is, let's buy another speed thingy for what? $20,000, $15,000, whatever they are. I'll tell you, it works. We had that sign on Gustan Road for at least a month. I slowed down. I might not be very big, but I've got a very heavy foot and I slowed down. I think we have, and it never fails. We had a grandchild hit our emergency button that we were being, that was being, yeah, what do you call it? Not invaded, but someone was breaking into the house. We had a state trooper in our house in less than eight or nine minutes. And he let us know when he found out it was a child hit the panic button. Do you know how long it took me to get here from point A to point B? He was not a happy man, but he got there. That was the whole point. We, we are well protected. You know, do I like it that now I lock my doors when I never did before? Yeah, you know, I lock my doors. That's it. It's a lot of money. I think 20 dollars serves us well.
Robert?
For the question that if Wakefield or Milton or whatever comes across the line, yes, they do. But the county sheriff has to tell them he can come across. Just verify that there. They do come across. Santa will come up. If we have anything major in town, we're going to have more people here than, than just one person for 40 hours. So.
So you don't know?
I don't know.
All right. Article eight. See if the town will vote to appropriate $41,215.45 from the unassigned fund balance in place in the Peck Road Reserve account to finish the reconstruction and paving of the portion of Peck Road from Milton Mill Road to the dirt. Any remaining funds in this account after the completion of the repair no later than 6/30/2025 shall be returned to the unassigned fund balance.
Just a quick question. Exactly how much is in this unassigned fund balance? Because I've got a lot of things.
Oh, the total.
Trying to take all this unassigned fund balance.
The area is $2,250,000.
Okay. Thank you. For emergencies. For emergencies.
For, for emergency and other uses.
Well, we offset taxes with it too.
Yeah, we, we drew down 500,000 to reduce the tax burden this year.
All right. David's going to give you the recap on Peck Road before we get to the car here. Maybe you'll answer some of your questions.
So what has happened here is, um, Wells came to us asking for some extra money for a project that he, he didn't start.
Correct.
Okay? He didn't budget for it. It was Yellow Road Commissioner. Looking through it, what we found is it looks like what happened, there wasn't, the finish coat wasn't.
Budgeted for.
Budgeted for. And so he doesn't have enough money to finish the project. Problem we have is there is money in that account. He will lose that money if the job isn't finished by January 30th. So, um, so what this does, it makes it so he can finish the pilot coat and the shoulders on the road.
And I think it's important to point out that the, the bill that's come in that makes up the difference all goes to an outside source. They're doing the top coat and the shoulder.
Yeah, they're doing everything, yeah.
It's at no benefit to the road commissioner, short of getting it finished off his list and being put away for the winter.
June 30th, anything?
What, did I say?
January.
Oh, I'm sorry. June. Thanks for the correction. So, and I guess a quick, so what we've done now, and I'm sure most people in this room are aware, is what we're doing is projects. We're, we're, we're putting a certain amount of money for this project, and that's where all the money for that project comes from. This was the first one that we've done. And I think there was a little confusion on what we were allowed, whether we were allowed to pull money from. They thought, I think a lot of it too is, I think, they thought they could pull it out of their summertime maintenance, and it wasn't the deal. Everything was supposed to come from this fund only. And so I, I believe that's probably part of the problem.
Of how, why it came over short.
Yeah. Yeah. But I think he was allowed to, I think he thought he was allowed to use the money out of other accounts. Which doesn't work in the case.
Any questions on Peck Road? Perfect. Article nine. See if the town will vote to appropriate $9,000 to deposit in the existing statutory reserve fund pursuant to main revised statute, Title 30, Chapter 223, Subsection 7, Section 5801, to assist road associations in preventing storm runoff pollution from reaching rate ponds is authorized by MFR 3106. Road associations formed pursuant to that title are eligible for funding. If the requirements are not met, if the requirements are met as determined by the select board and/or the Maine Department of Environmental Protection, the town shall fund the proposed repairs until the $9,000 is exhausted or June 30th, 2025, whenever comes first. David?
So we, as of right now, this count is zero.
Right. We started it in 18?
I believe it was 2018. And so I, I finished the last road committee meeting, and we approved the last two applications. And what we had to do, we had to split it in half because it wasn't enough to fulfill their request. At this meeting, the concern was that in the spring, because that's when you do a lot of your work, you know, with the, you know, the winter and everything else, that there wouldn't be, that these roads wouldn't be able to get any funds. So I asked the board to put this forward under the, so this is, this is going to go until June 30th. Okay? What I'm, what the road committee is doing right now is they're working on a new method on how we're going to distribute this money. And they're pretty excited about it. I'm pretty excited about it. I think it's going to help a lot more roads. So that's why we're looking for right now, putting $9,000 forward just in case we get two or three applications in the spring, or even this winter, fall of the spring, that we continue on this. But, but I don't, I don't feel going further down the road that this is something we're going to be doing. So this will be a temporary, temporary.
What if those four applications are coming in instead of three?
So how we handled the last one is depending on timing. So as soon as they come in, we send them to the road committee, and we send them to the board of selectmen and everybody to review. They're reviewed immediately as they come in. So if four happen to walk in on the same day, I have to believe that, assuming they all met all the requirements, they did what they did this last time, and they took the balance and divided it in half.
No, what I meant, why Jen, if they did come in at the same time like these last two did.
Well, if the fourth one comes in and we've expended the $9,000, then we're done.
Well, the odds are, I think there's only five roads that actually get the money.
Overall?
Overall. So the odds of, you know, four coming in at once, I don't know. We won't, we only, we got repeat offenders that always come in and get their money, which is great, it's good and all that, but there's only so many that actually do it all the time. So I'm not worried about it.
It's going to be tough.
And if we have the same problem we had last time, we'll split it up and do whatever we have to.
First come is how we've handled them since the other past.
But the road committee asked us to put $9,000 forward, that's what we did.
I watched the meeting, so I know how they come up with that number. The issue, I guess, is that there should have been, being the statutory reserve fund, it should have been kept up with over the years, so there'd be money there. And originally, there was more road associations that applied for this, and they were eligible on the state law. And then the board put more restrictions on the eligibility of it. And it was just so much, so cumbersome to try to do it, that those road associations gave up on it.
Okay.
That is not true. The state required us to put those stipulations in there, so we're doing what the state required.
The town meeting voted the state requirements. After the fact, the board of selectmen put more restrictions in it, and that is true.
Thank you, Dennis.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other, oh, Jay.
Just real quickly, the reason why, Jay Ward, the reason why we asked for the $9,000 was we took an average over the years. There are eight road associations that have successfully put in application and been paid off. And we just took an average based on our previous six years of doing this, so.
I think it's, it's a good idea. And when I said the five, there's five, get more than everybody else. There was a couple stragglers that came along and got some, but we were hoping more. But I think this will work out.
And we are working together to increase the number of eligible roads and potentially getting some of the roads that haven't been able to get, get them something. Thank you.
Roll it? Okay, just wait a minute.
All right, Article 10. See if the town will vote to appropriate $45,000 from the unassigned fund balance for the purchase of land located at Tax Map 133, Lot 40.
So this is about the public boat launch, which is on Young Ridge Road on Wilson Lake. This is brought to the attention of the select board by the Conservation and Forestry Committee because they had some concerns, like some of them had been out there and they saw that kind of like the survey markers. The corner of the land for sale is in kind of part of the travel lane of the boat ramp at, on Wilson Lake. And there were some concerns of like what would happen if that land would be sold, concerns about potentially the landowner putting up a fence. Which was on, similar to Horn Pond along the New Bridge Road, impeding the access to the boat launch. Concerns about the impeding access was parking. Already, there's parking on the road that would make parking even more difficult. Lack of access to the boat launch could potentially impact whether or not inland fisheries and wildlife would stock the lake, because they only stock lakes that have public access to them. And also impacting the public use. So the Conservation and Forestry Committee came to the select board at our August 7th meeting and recommended that we look into it and take action. They believed it fell underneath their kind of goals and the guidelines, both the work that they're doing. And as the word article is asking for, it is $45,000. So with approval of the voters as especially telling me that is how much the town would purchase the land for, if approved.
Sharon asks, first of all, I'm remiss, I meant to say thank you for your service to the town. That's the first thing I should have said. I and my wife, we own the property adjacent to that lot. So we have some questions. First of all, does the town have an easement to cover the boat launch?
We own the lot.
Okay, so the transfer of that property, because it does go like right up the line from what we can tell, right up to the launch.
Yeah, we own the boat launch itself, obviously the piece of the road, so we own everything around it, except for the house on the other side.
Okay, are you going to utilize the survey that was recently done, or are you going to do a new survey before that property is actually closed?
So it is, are you talking about for evaluation, or just?
No, survey landline, potlines of that plot, where it actually lies.
It was just done.
We understand the problem of just.
You're going to accept that one that was done?
Yeah, because I mean, that's how this whole thing came up, is when they went out and started laying it out, they put the pin in, where they put the pin in, it was right next to where we back it in for the boat launch.
Right.
And that's when the phone calls started coming, and then the forestry conservation got involved.
And any, obviously, any changes that you make to that area is going to affect our property value, since we have bought that. With that being said, are there going to be any changes to what's down there now? Are you planning on clearing trees? Are you planning on adding additional parking? Because people want to park there, but I can tell you that that's both positive and a negative, because they trash the joint. They don't ever clean up, and then it's all really nilly with the trailers and stuff. A lot of people are respectful, but there's a lot of people that are not. And that's in the winter and in the summer, but the ice fishing is very sloppy also.
So the main thought process behind purchasing this land was to preserve it already there. We don't want to lose that. Whether what happens down the future, we haven't really discussed that. The main priority was to make sure that there's no, there's no potential something happening with what happened down on Horn Pond where fence goes and gives it that access. So that was the main focus of purchasing this piece of land. Is that something that you're talking about, will something would have been considered and taken into consideration, and would that benefit? Because there are parking concerns, I know Mr. Wintle, the experience with the roads, has talked about plowing and safety concerns as well with the way the parking is right now.
Yeah, the winter time, what we used to do, we would, myself and Scott, when he used to do the same thing, what we would do, we would push a snow off as far as we could so we could get the ice fishermen off the road, because right on that corner, it's pretty nasty.
Yeah, and people drive really fast. Can we get that officer 20 hours? We have to come a little off the down there.
Get some fishermen.
They got killed there, they have people and pets and stuff, so it is a valid concern. So she could add that on, because we don't have any signs saying, there's not a sign saying the boat launch is there. So people come ripping around that corner, and that's a separate note, but please, we need at least a sign saying kids and pets.
But at the end of the day, it's going to be an issue down the road of the parking. If this individual decides to, you know, for the rocks or whatever he can, as long as he stays within his right of way. But when it came forward, and because we did some haggling to get down to where we are.
Yes.
This is about half the money.
Yes.
Okay? We, I believe it's beneficial to the town of Acton whenever you have a situation where you can gain more access to the lakes. Well, maybe because you live on it, there are people who don't.
People were more respectful?
Oh, and I understand that, you know, people, some people just aren't, you know, they don't realize what they've got when they're.
And we have, you know, loons, we have many, many loons that are out there, other native wildlife that gets threatened by people who come, and they don't really, they don't care. So these are all things that need be taken into account as well. But I would ask that if you are going to have any plans to expand parking or access to that boat launch and to that lake, that they be submitted in writing, to be voted on at the same time that we're purchasing this property. People need to know what we're thinking of doing with it. I'm not arbitrarily against buying that property, because I believe in green space, I was on the committee. And I think it could be viable, but I think it needs to be contained. It's only a 300 acre, excuse me, it's only a 300 acre lake.
There have been no discussions about changing use of that property.
It was just to conserve it as it is.
It's pretty much just, just making so nothing else can happen there. Honestly, to do anything there, it'd act Congress.
Yeah, 1006.
Yeah, but no, DEP, I mean, oh, it would be your nightmare.
Right.
Pretty much what we're doing, we're looking to buy it to preserve the parking area and making sure that our boat launch doesn't get disturbed.
I get that. And if you buy it, are you going to be responsible for cleaning the trash up?
Yeah.
And on that.
Just like any other piece of property that we own.
Yeah, it would be a town's land.
Okay, I just want to make sure that was.
There's a park, you get somebody to clean it up.
And also, while I have your attention, all these things that were submitted, how much are they looking to increase our taxes for next year, to pay for all of these things?
They will not, they're coming from reserves. So they will not end up in the operating budget, which means we will not need to raise taxes to cover them.
For the foreseeable future, or just in next year?
These are all one-time items, except the place. The place is the only one that's, because I understand it's different.
I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Roll it?
I'll take a last stab. I was not aware that the town owned a boat launch. When did the town purchase this boat launch?
Oh, the deed says we own it, so I have no idea.
Usually, boat launches are taken care of by the state. When they wanted a boat launch down on Nelson, the state bought that land, they put the boat launch in. When they wanted a boat launch on Square Pond, they did that. They did as well. And I understand why they did, because, you know, everybody wants to fish, and I like to fish. But if you don't have public access, then the state says, we're not going to stock. And they were very, very adamant about it, asked the people on Square Pond.
I think they're still stocking it.
They stock Square Pond, yes, most of them, but they weren't going to if they didn't have a boat launch, and nobody wanted to sell the state property. So I'm just curious, you know, why doesn't the state own that boat launch?
We have no idea. When we looked it up, it came up that we were the owners of that boat launch.
It might need to be investigated.
Well, I don't know.
Personally, I don't think, I don't think the town needs to own property other than the property that the municipal building is on. Like, we've got a piece of property down here on the H Road, right down below the little fire pond. Can't do a damn thing with it, nothing. You can't build on it, we can't sell it.
We can sell it if somebody wants to buy it.
Well, nobody's going to buy it because they can't build on it, so it's a waste of time.
Oh, butter, it could be useful to a butter.
Could be, but no butter's, you know, come forward. So again, you know, I just don't think the town needs to be in the business of being a landowner. We got a piece of property up on Old Town Farm Road.
The confirmation committee would argue different on that.
I would imagine the state will not buy it from us. If we gave it to them, maybe, but they're not going to pay us.
And how much is that piece of property? Point what?
Point 06.
Point 06.
No, that's a piece of mine. The boat launch is point 01.
So be point 07.
We literally only know where the boat launch moved out.
Yeah, and there's been a lot of talk, if you haven't looked at the property, you should, online, there's been a lot of talk about that the property existed before the road got put in, the road, because there was, because the gentleman that owns this piece owns the property across, and everybody wondered how he could get that small of a lot, that the road was put in and inadvertently split the property. And there's quite some history there, but we've done a lot of research on it, we definitely own that boat launch.
I don't know, I think I'd like to, I personally would like to see the state own it, not us.
Okay.
I think it would be in the best interest of the town if it has site plan, the measurements, the dimensions, and the stop and go where the sheriff's land stops and goes, so that we know, as we drive by, what we find, what not find.
There's a survey, a recent survey in the last five years of that property, it was done by outside company.
Is it, do you have a copy?
Our attorney does.
Yeah, would it be beneficial to have it copied up so we could see it?
I can't see why not.
It actually, you saw it, it actually comes out.
It wasn't the survey?
Dennis?
So what this amounts to is we're being asked to spend $45,000 on roughly a 20x20 area. Right?
That 20x20 area was evaluated at $36,275, so it's not too far off. And again, it is about ensuring that the lake continues to be stocked, ensuring that there's public recreational access to that lake, and that we don't have anyone impeding that. It is widely used, like we mentioned, for people who like to fish, or kayak, or swim. So.
Well, we already own the boat access.
The problem, the problem is, is if the land that is abiding in, potentially runs into, would impede the ability for boats to get into there. Whoever were to buy it decided, we don't want to have people on here, if we want to build a fence, like what happened on Horn Pond and a New Bridge Road, it would potentially impact people's ability to access that boat launch. And the idea of purchasing this land is to prevent that, so that people continue to partake in the recreational activities that they enjoy doing.
All I'm saying is $45,000 for less than a 20 foot, like 20 foot areas in a lot of money.
It sounds like an envelope, but it's not too much higher of the valuation than what they started asking for, what was like 80, 81?
It's all AI of the whole, though, as you look at a piece of property, it's waterlogged, it expands the boat access. Yes, it's a lot of money, but like Dan says, if they decide to do it and impede it, it's very narrow spot to get a boat in there. And I think it's the town of Acton's responsibility, the board, when something like this comes forward, and the conservation committee asks us to do this, that we put this forward in the best of the town of Acton. Go ahead.
Mike Benjamin, I am the chair of the conservation committee. I also live on Peacock Road, and I own boat, and I just took it out today. And as best as I could, I had to run over that corner of property. So not only does the $45,000 allow the public to use that, but every landowner around the lake, and Ed knows this too, is able to use that boat launch. There's, I don't know how many boats on that lake, people that live there, or they're landowners there, they use that boat launch. It's used extensively year-round. So I think the $45,000 is an investment. We don't want the state on it, because they will clear that land, and they won't put in extra parking and all that. All we want is that, all I would like as a landowner and a user of the lake, is to be able to pack my boat in there. Years ago, you could go over to Hawk Road and use the right of way there, but that was closed, and it's only for residents only. So that boat launch on Youngs Ridge Road was developed, never had the cement there, it was just straight in, and it wasn't very good, they put in the cement, and now it's a little easier to get in and out of. But we wanted, as a committee, we wanted the board to look at it, what you've done, which I thank you for, and we'll continue to look at land like that and show you, maybe that's something the town ought to look at. Thank you. Thank you, appreciate your work.
Any more, any more questions, comments? I don't see any, it's getting late. What are we on, we're on 10, right?
Yep.
Last one. Okay, so assuming we don't have any more questions or comments, that's the last article. I guess we'll.
You want to motion to the chairman?
I don't think we need to do this.
Okay.
End of meeting at 8:17. Thank you.